This time I'd like to call to order the Monday, March 2nd meeting of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I'm going to ask Reverend Kim Farabee to come forward and lead us in the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Let us bow our heads. Gracious Father, we come before you tonight. God, we ask that you give us guidance and wisdom and direction. And God, that you allow us to agree and to disagree, but to come together collectively in your name that we do pray. Amen.
Amen.
One allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Farabee. This time, as we approve the agenda, there are two changes. One change I would like to make, under administrative reports, we're going to delete Keith Hamm with the Powell Point Christian Church talking about the mobile crisis unit. And with that, need a motion for approval.
So moved.
Have a motion. Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item is public comment. At this time, when we call you forward, please give your name and address for the record. Mr. McCree will keep the time, three minutes. Yeah, we did not have a work session at 6:00, I believe, the person that was doing it couldn't make it tonight. So anyways, with that, first on the agenda is Ms. Mary Etheridge.
Good evening. My name is Mary Etheridge, and I live at 846 Shawboro Road in Shawboro. Even though the February 16th meeting was canceled due to the weather, I still want to give my prepared public comment for that day because February 16th was President's Day, a day when we honor our founding fathers and most of all, our principles of freedom. Our founding fathers wanted to make individual freedom to be the keystone of our constitutional republic, for they knew that big government cannot be trusted. They made the U.S. Constitution to be the supreme law of the land that limits the power of government and gives its citizens the Bill of Rights. We all know that the size of government affects every aspect of our lives, from our federal government to our local government, government that is growing every day and doing whatever they want. My family and I have been fighting our local government since 2011 because of the local government not listening to their professionals and not taking anyone's advice and approving a junkyard in our backyard. Yes, government that thinks they know best and citizens who have to suffer. So in honor of President's Day two weeks ago, I would like for you to listen to some quotes made by two of our founding fathers. George Washington said, "Government is not reason; it is not eloquence; it is force, like a fire, a troublesome servant and a fearful master. Never for a moment should it be left to irresponsible actions." And quoting Thomas Jefferson, "The reading of history convinces me that most bad government results from too much government." Thank you.
Thank you. Those are some of my favorite quotes as well. Next, we have Tom Dosian.
Okay, my name is Tom Dosian. I live at 507 Putt and Ridge Road in Moayaca, and I was here a month ago, and I haven't heard any, had any correspondence about the ditches. And I called the Sheriff's Department about people speeding up and down Putt and Ridge Road, and no responses by the dispatcher. Said they would call back, and to this day, they haven't called back, and that's been over three weeks ago. And I'm not a policeman, but there are little cars with fart cans on them, if y'all know what fart cans are. Make a lot of noise.
The little fat mufflers on it, yeah. And you're having trouble with speeding.
Yeah, and I know down in Academy, they have a driving course there on Sundays, and I don't know if that's where those cars are coming from or not, but it's about seven days a week after it gets dark normally.
Mr. Manager, could you contact the Sheriff's Department or Highway Patrol and ask them to pay attention to that time?
I sure will.
Could you get in touch with them, so much flooding?
I will follow back on my, I still have your contact information for last meeting, and I'll follow up, make sure that someone has contacted him.
Okay. Yeah, for two weeks after that, they grade Cooper Gare Road, State Route 1217, after I was down there, but they haven't done anything to get a ditch yet.
Okay, thank you for coming. And sir, if you don't hear something back, please give one of us a call.
Okay, I sure will.
We're on the website. You can find our contact information.
Okay.
Thank you. Next is Jim Wheeler.
Good evening. All right, my name is Jim Wheeler, living in Beechwood Shores, 191 Beechwood Shores Drive, Moayaca. I want to ask something of all of you. Working for the county and the state for the past 23 years until I retired last June, had a lot of occasion to be in a courthouse. There's one thing that the courthouse is lacking, and that is a secure camera on the front part of the courthouse. You have a pond out there that people walk around all the day long. When I was working, within the last, I would say, three years, there's been four assaults happened on the steps or outside the front steps there. No cameras to verify or not verify that these assaults occurred. One of them was an assault by an attorney on his client's husband. The guy came in, got charges, issued charges, become a hair of getting fired by the Chief District Court Judge because there was no cameras there. The guy was found guilty. It happened. I believe the guy, when he came in, and that's why he did charges. But we really need a camera on the front of that courthouse. We have one on both sides, looking at the parking lot, looking at the health department. Got one on the back, but there's none in the front. That's where everybody comes and goes to court.
Going straight out.
Sure, front steps. No security out there at all.
Didn't we, didn't we talk about some cam?
Well, the clerk of court has requested a couple of items to be addressed with that facility, and they've been included, or will be included, in the budget that's being put together for you and stuff, but there is a request for security from the building.
And replacing some chairs?
Replace, well, putting a bench or a pew type facility there, and also some staffing chairs, yes. That's been submitted to us for our consideration with the budget.
Are you anticipating, do you have that put in for the budget? Because that's something that...
I will include it in the budget I submit to the board, yes.
Yeah, actually, Mr. McCord had brought that to our attention as well, and Mr. Matusko has brought some of this to our attention as well.
Okay. I was there today, I checked, and I said, "No, it's not been done yet." And that's something that we talked about with Mr. McCord and myself a year ago.
Well, he did bring it forward, and I do know that it was supposed to be in this budget, and I think Mr. Scanlon has verified that.
Okay. But when they have court there, four and five days a week, and sometimes two courts going at the same time, I think it's very important.
I agree.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. It's all we have. Sign up for public comment. This time, I'm going to close the public comment. First item on administrative reports is support of funds program report from Tourism Director Tamara Coogler.
Thank you very much for having me here tonight. I wanted to give you an update on the tourism department's supportive funds program, or the event marketing assistance program. And given out some money this year, which is really great. I believe I have a spreadsheet that you can look at. Whalehead is one of the recipients. They've received a total of $1,000 this year for Christmas in Corolla and Night of 1,000 Stars. Coin Jot Ruerton Club has received $1,769 for the Wildlife Festival and the Silverbells Craft Show. The Arts Council for Art at Stravaganza has received $1,275. Nott's Island Ruertons, for the Peach Festival that's coming up, they'll be receiving a total of $1,850. And the Currituck Master Gardeners, coming up with their home flower and garden show, will be receiving approximately almost $2,000. We still have a few applications for this year that are still pending. We're still looking at those. But we've, the amount for each event, each of the events that we've given out so far this year is $7,890. So we're really, really pleased with that. For next year, we are trying to grow this program. This is a great opportunity for our nonprofits and our for-profit businesses to be able to get some assistance from the tourism department to help them with their marketing efforts. That generally tends to be one of the most expensive items when you're putting on an event. So this is an opportunity for us to give back, to help them grow their event, and help bring people from outside of the county and our own residents to a wonderful time in our county. So for next year, for the next fiscal year, we have budgeted for $20,000 for event marketing assistance. And our goal is to go out and try to make some of these organizations that aren't aware of the program aware of it, so that they can apply, and just keep it at the forefront of people's minds. We're going to do a mailing, and we're also going to do a concentrated effort to send tourism staff out to meet with these organizations during their regularly scheduled meetings to let them know that this is available for them. Does anybody have any questions about the current spending or about the program?
Well, the nonprofits are eligible to continue every year.
They are.
And the for-profits have a sunset of...
Five years.
Five years.
Mm-hmm.
And have pretty good success with this program, would you say?
I believe so. This past year, we reinstituted some of the funding and accountability levels for the program. Up to $1,000 in assistance requested is at the discretion of the tourism department. Anything $1,000 and over must go before and be approved by the Tourism Advisory Board. So there's some checks and balances there. Organization or a business can apply the first year from between $500 to $2,000, depending on what their expected attendance is going to be. So if it's 100 people or less, we offer $500. And it's on a sliding scale, so every year, they'll receive a little less. And the intention of the program is to help them, giving them more money upfront at the first year, is to help them grow the program, so that they should have decreasing levels of funding assistance needed as the event grows. As you said, for-profits have a sunset of five years. Nonprofits can continue indefinitely, but at a lower funding level.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Chairman, if I recall, when we made this little change to this thing to, before you guys done this report, one of the other things we had talked about and was brought to our attention is that some people were saying that they had applied and had not received any assistance. Has that been the case with what you're, what you're reporting to us this year? Is there any nonprofits or profit agencies that have applied that did not receive?
Everybody, everybody who has applied has been, has been evaluated. One particular application was denied by the Tourism Advisory Board because it was a wonderful program, but it wasn't an event. And the county wanted to get behind this particular program from Corolla Fire and Rescue. And so the county decided that they would help fund the marketing assistance, even though the Tourism Advisory Board could not. But they were still evaluating. The tourism board did look at it and made the decision that it was not under the parameters of the supportive funds program.
Okay.
And I had, somebody asked me today about the number of visitors you have at the center up there in Moayaca. Has that number continued to rise as it has in the past, or?
It has continued to rise. I actually have some numbers here. It's steadily grown since 2008, when we started looking at foot traffic. The first year in 2008, we had a total of 27,681 visitors walk through the doors of the Welcome Center in Moayaca. This past year in 2014, we had a total of 82,960 visitors walk through our doors, which we're very, very pleased with that. In 2013, we had 60,027. So we actually experienced a growth of almost 38% from visitors walking in year over year. Some of that, we would like to attribute to awareness of the center. We also put up a new billboard, which is about a half a mile from the border, and telling them that the visitor center is there. And then, it's just, it's an awareness, so they're becoming more aware. It's a great location for us in the sense that people have been driving for many hours, usually look at legs of journeys. So right when they hit the North Carolina line, they know the Welcome Center is there. They know they can stop and take a rest break. They can take a chance to breathe. They can let the dogs out. They can let the kids out. So it's an opportunity for them to come in and relax. And also, for us, it's an opportunity to convert those tourists who might be going to Dare County. So we can talk to them and show them about the things that they can do in Corolla on a day trip. If they're going to Dare, hey, you can go up and see the horses, or we've got the Great Lighthouse, we have the Whalehead Club. So our staff is very much aware of tourists walking in who are going to Dare and the opportunities to try to get them to take a day trip up to Corolla.
Can't local businesses also put their brochures in the Welcome Center?
They certainly do. We have a shopping area, we have a dining area, we have an attraction area. So we're constantly pointing out this place is our tourist.
Anybody on the mainland or the Outer Banks can put their brochures in there, and y'all will make them available to those people and encourage them to stop.
If it's a tourism-related business, we encourage them to put that up. They do have to have a brick and mortar store in the county, though. So if it's a photographer who does do a lot of photography, for example, in Corolla, but their business is in Virginia Beach, we have to deny them the ability to put their brochure there because they do not reside in Currituck County, or their brick and mortar store is not in Currituck County.
Chairman, these numbers you just give us, they don't in no way reflect the visitors at the Corolla Center neither. Is that correct?
I'm sorry?
The numbers you just give us in no way reflect the visitors that we have that come to the Visitor Center, Corolla.
I do not have the Corolla Visitor Center count with me.
I just wanted to clarify that these, this 80,000 don't include those as well.
It does not include the people walking through the Corolla Center, which is just as comparable, or maybe even more. We're kind of fortunate to find that we're in a great location there, too, so.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next is public hearing. CDBG closeout public hearing memo, that would be Mr. Woody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the closeout of the Community Development Block Grant Program that was administered by the county. This public hearing is an opportunity for the community or the public to review and assess the performance of this grant program. This is actually a physical year 2011 grant. Granted, it has a three-year term, so we're wrapping it up. The Community Development Block Grant is a program that is administered in the state through the North Carolina Department of Commerce, and what it is intended to do, among other things, is to provide improved or new housing opportunities for families or residents of low to moderate income. So what happened is, is the county received a $400,000 grant administered through the State Department of Commerce. With that, we accepted applications, identified four properties that were eligible for this grant, and through the process, we have either removed old structures and replaced those with new, or in one case, rehabilitated the structure. And what it does is, it typically improves living conditions. And this year, all four of our properties included elderly, low to moderate income people, people on fixed incomes. And I want to go through a couple of photographs to show you some of the work that was accomplished through this program. This is case number one. This was a replacement, and you can see 729 South Bayview Road, the before picture on the left. And then, of course, on the right, you can see the after picture. That was the completion of the work that was done to the handicap ramp there in the, in the picture. Case number two, Northwest Backwoods Roads up in the north end of the county. Again, on the left, you can see the old, the old house, the old structure. On the right, you see the replacement. Case number three, off the highway, excuse me, 6315 Carrottock Parkway. This was the rehab. In this case, you can see the house on the left. Previously, after the rehab work, kind of tightened it up, make it more energy efficient, improve, any leaks in the roof, plumbing, et cetera. You can see the trench in the picture on the right is the water line being installed. So this property is now on county water, which is also included in the grant. And then finally, case number four, this is again off the highway. On the left, you can see how the property looked initially, and on the course, on the right, you can see the finished product. So this program does, does target, again, low to moderate income persons, and you can see some of the results of the program. Many of these houses were in very poor condition, and what this does is hopefully give people a good quality place to live and reside. And a lot of times, we've found that even, as you would expect, these new houses even help reduce utility bills significantly. So there is a lot, a lot of, you know, a lot of that to be concerned with, too. Anyways, I can answer any questions you have, Mr. Chairman. This is a public hearing, so if anybody in the audience would like to comment, you would certainly take those comments at this time. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. Number one, there's no county money involved in this, correct?
That's correct.
It's all federal money that passes to the state that passes to the county.
That's correct. 100% of the funds come from the, from the federal government through the state of North Carolina.
Number two, there's an income or eligibility. In other words, you can't be...
Threshold.
There's a threshold, correct?
That's right. There's a threshold on income, and even, it even prioritizes, for example, elderly or people on fixed incomes, or families with children, there are certain priorities that are put in place as well. So it is targeted.
And number three, the house has to be determined that it can't be rehabbed before it's demolished and a modular is put up, correct?
That's correct.
And who does that determination?
The chief building inspector, and as well as with officials that represent the state, so. And these houses, the houses that were removed and replaced were in very, very bad shape.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Woody, did this program, I've heard, you know, if you can clarify that or not, that it doesn't look like it's going to get funded again, this go around, or is that?
It's, that's correct. The funding for the scattered site housing program has been removed. It's part of some of the consolidation at the state level. I think most of those funds in the Department of Commerce have been redirected towards economic development projects and improvements, and infrastructure improvements. Very little money left for housing anymore.
But I can tell you, over the years, that I've been a part of this...
Helped a lot of people.
Yeah, yeah. I've known people that didn't even have indoor toilets or running water, that this program has helped them to get their homes rehabbed and brought up to a decent living standard.
Been a nightmare or two, but overall, it's been a good program.
Oh, yeah, there's been a stomp toe once or twice, but... Anyone else? All right, I'll open the public hearing. I have no one signed up. Is there anyone that wishes to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. And does this require any action?
It does not require action. It will require your signature after the meeting.
Okay. All right, thank you. Old Business GCS Economic Development Grant Agreement. I believe Mr. Bishop and Mr. McCree, this would be you, one of you, or both of you, or either of you, or neither of you.
Well, I guess I'm glad to start it and can walk the board through this agreement and how we got where we are. You have before you at your place a February 2014 resolution, February 17th, that by which the Board of Commissioners authorized and adopted an incentive of $120,000 to go to General Government Contracting Specialists Incorporated. They were known as Project Jessica at the time, and that's what appears in the resolution. The resolution further authorized the chairman of the Board of Commissioners to execute the incentive contract, which was to be created after, after the resolution was adopted, and any other documents necessary to the project on behalf of the county. The purpose for the agreement being before you was as much for information as anything, so the commissioners would see the final version of the agreement that the chairman was to sign as authorized by the resolution from February 17th, 2014. I will walk you through the agreement briefly. This agreement is in the form of what is typical of an economic incentive grant agreement you would find in other communities around the state. It is also modeled after the state of North Carolina's agreement that has already been executed between the county, the state of North Carolina, and the company. This particular agreement would provide that the county, as a part of the incentive grant provided for by the state of North Carolina, the county will pay a total amount of up to $120,000 to use by, to be used by the company to offset statutorily authorized expenses, which can include the installation, purchase of equipment, structural repairs, improvements, or renovations to existing buildings, or expansion by the construction of new buildings, construction of or improvements to new existing or existing water, sewer, gas, natural gas, or electrical distribution lines, equipment for existing buildings, or for new or proposed buildings to be used for manufacturing and industrial operation, or expenses specifically that might be provided for by Special Act of the General Assembly. The company represented at the time that the Board of Commissioners adopted the resolution in 2014, that the monies would primarily be utilized to allow for the construction of a facility to cause them to connect to the county's wastewater treatment plant, a lift station, to connect to the county's wastewater treatment plant. The contract provides that the full amount of the incentive grant will be paid only if the following conditions are met by the company. First of all, they must maintain current operations in facilities here in North Carolina. They must make a good faith effort to create and maintain what are entitled, target new jobs for a full grant to be provided to the company. And first of all, they have said that they will, their efforts will be to create 60 jobs, but to receive full grant, they must at least create 54 new jobs by May 1st, 2017, which is the end date of the grant period. New jobs must be new jobs. They cannot be existing jobs already in North Carolina, or employees that are shifted or transferred from other locations outside North Carolina into this state to be counted as meeting the target new job criteria or requirement. There is a provision that would allow for a pro-rata allocation of the grant if during the grant period from the time that it's signed to May 1st, 2017, that they are able to verify and produce documentation to the state of North Carolina and to Currituck County that have, they have met certain verifiable goals, that again, would allow them to receive a pro-rata allocation of the grant amount. They must also provide an average weekly wage of all permanent full-time jobs equal to or exceeding $612 per week. They must provide health insurance for all permanent full-time employees. They must make good faith efforts to invest $325,000, as they indicated at the time the resolution was adopted, in plant equipment. And $292,500 of that, 325,000, must be invested in the county by May 1st, 2017. Now, what if the company fails to do these things? Well, if we've already paid out any grant monies, then the company is required to pay back to the county those monies that have been repaid, paid to them under the incentive grant agreement. If they fail to provide health insurance, if they cease operation at any time during the period of the grant agreement, or one year following the end of the grant agreement, if they fail to achieve an average weekly... if they failed to achieve an average weekly wage standard of $612 per week for their permanent full-time employees, or if they failed to maintain books and accounting records showing receipt and use of grant funds, all those reasons would also cause and require the company to repay the county what incentive monies had been paid up to that time. If the county has not yet paid any incentive monies out, uh, and the company fails to meet these terms and conditions of the agreement, then there will be no payment of county money or as an incentive grant, uh, to the company. This again is modeled after the state of North Carolina's program and the state of North Carolina's contract. The state will be requiring the same types of things from the company, uh, and the same type of verification before the state will, uh, pay out any of its portion of the incentive grant. Uh, so that's the basis for the agreement. And I'm glad to answer any questions, uh, commissioners may have.
Want to have a question?
Yes, sir.
Mr. McCree, my understanding was the, the, and, and again, it's been a while, but there was no cash per se for the, the county to pay out. It was the, the in-kind service was hooking up to the sewer system. Is, am I missing the boat there or?
Well, there, there, there is cost, as I understand it, for the construction of a lift station and for, and for the connection of the, of the...
Understand.
Facility to the, to the wastewater treatment plant.
Understand that. Providing sewer to the facility. Yeah.
Right.
Okay. All right. And so that's where we're still at. I'm, just confused me with...
Utilities, not cash. Correct?
That, that's my understanding.
Yeah, that's what...
To, to, my understanding was to the extent that there was any residual, if it doesn't cost 120,000 to provide wastewater to the facility, the balance of the, the incentive is available for that company for the use pursuant to the, the items the general statute says that they can spend it towards.
It, it would be for the statutorily qualified purposes.
We're not anticipating to, I mean, to make sure, we're not anticipating the connection to the wastewater to absorb the entire 120. It will take the majority, but not all of it. The balance of that fund would be available to the company, again, to, to offset the cost of infrastructure tools and equipment necessary for them to, to operate.
Would a lift station, in effect, benefit the surrounding properties as well, would it?
It would.
And Mr. McCree, in effect, is this a tri-party agreement then, since the state, the county, and the applicant?
Well, the state, the county, and the applicant have already signed the state agreement. Uh, as part of that, uh, the, the other piece to that puzzle is that the county and the company must enter into an incentive grant agreement to provide for the county's portion or match, I guess it is, uh, of the state program. Uh, and that's why this agreement is an essential part of going forward with this incentive grant program.
Let me ask one last question. I know you have some questions. And you may have some as well down here. But where the job, from, I remember when we were at the airport and the Secretary of Commerce came in and, and, um, we announced this. Was it not true that these jobs were going to be manufacturing-type jobs?
I, I, I can't answer that question. I don't know if, and Mr. Bishop can, can better fill the board in?
I believe we're going to be building office furniture for government contracts or something like that?
I have with me the, um, and thank you, this is Peter Bishop, Director of Economic Development with the county. Uh, I have with me the actual employee profile and application to the State Department of Commerce and to Currituck County. And what I have listed in the jobs that were, um, included in this application are 10 jobs in administrative services, 10 jobs in business development and sales, 50 jobs in active construction on-site, 20 jobs as electricians, and 10 jobs in warehousing and manufacturing. So there's a spread throughout the company of different types of jobs that'll be doing different types of activity for their services.
Boots-on-the-ground type of jobs.
Yes, sir. So not just manufacturing.
Okay. Who, who wants to go next?
I've got a few concerns and a few questions. Um, reading through the contract, um, I read through it a few times. Um, it does say 60 jobs, but it doesn't say those 60 jobs have to be in Currituck County. Um, I've worked with a lot of government contracts. I, and I know some other folks in here have as well, um, federal contracts. Um, you go around to different bases all over the United States. And those are going to be supported from individuals that have to travel to those bases and be housed there. So it doesn't mean, from my reading to this and my understanding, that they're not going to be housed in Currituck County, which is a concern of mine, because I think we misled the public out there, the citizens, thinking that we're going to be, and based on this contract, it does not specifically say those jobs will be located in Currituck County. If, if these employees are hired and then they're shipped to California on a federal site, they're going to live out there. They're not going to be spending money in the county. They're not going to be living in the county. I have a concern with that. Um, and contracts can always be yanked. The federal government is very, I've, I've had it happen to me. They award you a contract. A month later, they can yank the funds away. The contract goes away. If they hire people to fulfill those contracts and then the contract gets canceled, how does that affect the new job quoted? Does that get scratched again? Do we, do we stay? Is, is that considered, um, you know, if they can just kind of keep moving them around? I mean, I have a concern with that. That's a big concern of mine right there, is the contract does not say it's county jobs. I mean, do, do we have an answer for that?
I, I can speak to that. Uh, the, the state agreement with the company, and this is typical throughout the, the, the state when they do these agreements, they typically do not specify the resident location of those jobs. What the state is concerned about mostly in offering of incentives is that their employees within the state of North Carolina, that the payroll is generated through the state of North Carolina, that the corporate headquarters, where those folks will be based on a payroll and, uh, other benefits basis is in North Carolina. Uh, the nature of this company, of course, being a contractor, as you know, Mike, uh, they will be, uh, traveling throughout. Um, this was not part of our negotiations with this company. Sometimes local governments do include percentages or set asides for local residents. It's rare, but it does happen in the state of North Carolina. That was not something that we negotiated with. And, uh, I've said this in personal conversations with the, the board. Um, it was never my intent to, uh, purport or to show that these would be Currituck residents or necessarily 100% Currituck jobs. Um, that was never my intent. It's not what we negotiated with the company. And it was never part of our discussions or part of this agreement. Um, so I understand the concern. It's a valid concern. We want as many of our residents to be employed as possible. Um, but it was not part of the negotiation discussion in this case.
And, and that's where I have, you know, the $120,000 of taxpayers' money, when I cannot see the benefits that this company retail with offerings, what benefits are the citizens of Currituck County going to see from this? I, I just can't see that. I don't see it in the contract. I mean, we talk about manufacturing jobs. Um, again, I know a year ago, they were, they had a contract with another firm to help manufacture furniture. And again, this is, I'm, I'm, I've heard, I don't know if it's for fag, but I've heard that that kind of working relationship has ceased and that, um, they may be, the company may not be wanting to manufacture as heavily as they were planning to do now versus possibly buying them somewhere else.
Well, and just to clarify, there's no need for speculation. We have representation of the company here.
That's fine.
So we can, i- if you'd like to ask directly, we've invited them to be here tonight. Um, to your other, uh, I, I guess I missed the, the earlier question that you had, um, on the, on the status of the company.
Well, I, I, let me, can certainly correct me if I misspeak on this, but the, the issue under the, the, the one North Carolina grant related to the jobs helps determine the, the amount of money that becomes available to the, the applicant in financial terms. What Currituck County is investing in and where our 120,000 goes to is into tax base in Currituck County. So I, I, I think that the, the jobs generate and determine the level of funding that the applicant qualifies for. But please keep in mind that our, our money is going into taxable items in Currituck County. And so the jobs may or may not physically be in Currituck. They will be North Carolina jobs paying income to the state of North Carolina. But the company has, has bought property. They've bought land. The, uh, as the county attorney just mentioned, the general statutes has a, a somewhat narrow use of how those funds can go into. It is in taxable items. So we, the county, will be growing our tax base by providing this, or our side of the incentive to this particular company. Um, that will remain, you know, hopefully, it's all of our wishes to see that this company is successful and grows. But if it isn't, that taxable basis is still created and still exists within our county.
Well, I might have to back on what Mr. Payment said. I would have assumed any agreement we were entering into would be for jobs in Currituck County.
That's certainly my assumption. I mean, again, assuming...
And I understand what you're saying is going into infrastructure, but I would just assume if we're going to do something like this and there's going to be jobs created, I'm going to be running into people at the food line that are working there, not at the airport.
My understanding is we're following the guidelines of the one North Carolina fund established by the state of North Carolina. Uh, I'm not aware that the local government has the level of flexibility that we could have specified jobs literally being Currituck County jobs, would, would, you know, whatever, whatever that definition would be.
If I understood from having gone through the opposite side of this entire process, the jobs that are identified in there are housed out of the office within Currituck County. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yes.
So those people are, by definition, North Carolina, uh, their earnings, they are employees in the state of North Carolina.
Yes.
They will be paying state income tax to the state of North Carolina. Um, I don't know, and we can ask when they come up, how many employees are going to be sitting within the, the building. But I will state categorically that those folks will eat here and they'll shop here and they'll buy gas here. And so by the nature of that hub being in Currituck County, the, the county's going to, the county's going to gain on this. I, I mean, whether or not the institution has a reliable, you know, business and growth plan, that, you know, that certainly could remain to be, be said. But the point is, you know, my office, for example, I have eight employees now in my office in Moayak. I am the only, no, there are two North Carolina residents in that office. Everybody pays North Carolina income tax, every single one of them.
And, uh, again, I'm sympathetic to, um, what Chairman O'Neill and Commissioner Payment have both said about having the locally-based employment and the value that brings. Um, it would be challenging for us as a community when we're doing corporate recruitment to require 100% residency because of the nature of job skills and abilities of our residents versus what the company may be bringing in. It's certainly my hope that our workforce is to the point where, uh, all those jobs can be filled by local residents. I, I think reality says otherwise in that we need some flexibility when we're recruiting companies, especially near the border, who may not want to relocate an entire workforce that think we have attractive business opportunities for them. But maybe their, you know, bookkeeper or half their manufacturing staff lives in Chesapeake and wants to remain in Chesapeake. Um, so we have to have some concern or some flexibility for, um, recruiting companies and having employees, uh, that live in other communities. I mean, not everybody that works for Currituck County lives in Currituck County, for example. So...
Peter, I'll add one more thing.
Yes.
You know, prove to people in Chesapeake that can act, that they can actually get a job and work in North Carolina. Right? That's step one, that it can be done. I have an individual right now who is house hunting in Currituck County because he can get it, he can work and, you know, cuts down his commute. And so i- if you can't show people and prove to them that there are good jobs in the, in the county, it's a hard sell.
Yes, sir. And, you know, and I'll just say, I don't have any issues with any company wanting to come open up and, and do business, you know, and have a place in Currituck County. Where I'm having some concerns with is, is having, is this $120,000 of, of taxpayer money that it's, it's, we're not, in my opinion, I don't think we're investing it in a business that is going to be beneficial to the citizens of Currituck County. Um, and I just, this type of contracting business is, it, it's not concrete. It's not, you know, it's, it's, government's going to change it. It's, I, again, I just don't feel comfortable with that type of investment for, for, uh, for, I think, what the citizens were, were expecting when it was first rolled out there, thinking that there were going to be a lot of concrete jobs in the county. And I just, I'm just having some concerns with that. Again, I don't, you know, businesses wanting to come here, we love as many as they want to come. I just, you know, if, if you're asking me to, to agree to invest $120,000 of taxpayers' money on this, and the way I'm reading the contract right here, I, I, I have concerns.
How long do they have to stay in business to not have to pay anything back?
Uh, May of 2018, May 1st, 2018. And, and that's assuming that they received any award and were eligible for award on the way. So it's a three-year grant agreement, and they are required to maintain the jobs that they receive dollars for, uh, up to one year after that.
And when is their start date?
Uh, it would be at the execution of this contract moving forward.
So it might be six months before they're ready to actually open and start business?
I, I believe they're already open in, in business.
Okay.
Could we invite them for...
Absolutely. I was letting the board ask questions of Peter.
Well, and, well, then I guess one for Ike. I mean, if, let's say this defaults, what kind of collateral, um, is there going to be enough collateral to, to collect on this?
I can address that for you.
Okay.
My name is James Allman. I'm CFO for Government Contracting Specialists.
I'm Amanda Ward. I'm the president of GCS.
My understanding all along is this has been a performance-driven grant. So if we don't perform, we don't take a dollar of your money. So at the end of the day, you look at our performance. And if you feel like we're up to your standard, you release your grant funds. If you don't, keep them. You know, so there, your risk is, I don't see any risk at all from that perspective. So, um, you know, we think it's a great opportunity. We appreciate the opportunity and the grant funds in the event that we receive them. But in the event we fail to perform and deliver what's on that agreement there, we don't take a dollar from you guys. So I think it's a win-win for both. You know, you got somebody aggressively trying to develop a business in Currituck County, recruit people from Virginia to come here. And granted, it is a government job. We all know how the government works in some cases. We don't know if we're going to have a contract tomorrow, if they're going to sequester the funds, pull it back, throw out another 100 million at us, who knows? But at the end of the day, you only pay us the grant money if we perform to our agreement. So I don't see the risk for you guys.
Sir, if I could ask just a couple of questions from, from y'all. Um, what's your typical contract look like? I mean, how many people? What's the period of performance ballpark?
Well, the, uh, ECP contract that we're on now is typical, typically a year to year. If we do burn the dollars up before the, uh, end of the contract, we do have some sole source funding that's available to us. Uh, we also have another contract that's a three-year, uh, multi-award contract that we're on. So we're vested for the next three years anyway. We're constantly looking at new opportunities. We're getting some new facility clearances. We are, by the way, already located in Currituck County. We have a substantial investment in Currituck County already. Um, we've purchased equipment for the potential manufacturing of these desks. You know, it does behoove us to build these things in-house. They are custom-designed per the classroom and the training opportunities that are available in the classroom. So, um, so again, it all varies. But right now, we have a, a good contract in place for three years.
And what's, uh, level of effort?
Well, you know...
I mean, I, ballpark.
We're, we're, we have had as many as 40 people on it. You know, so we brought 17 from Virginia here. You know, when that contract, uh, that we were on at that point in time expired, you know, the physical year, I believe, is, uh, you know, September 30th. Uh, some of those people were, uh, let go. We anticipated a new contract coming on. It got pushed back into the first of the year as the result of Congress not having their budget nailed down. Um, you know, it's been slow to kick off, but, uh, as the window closes, you know, they need to spend their money or they lose it. So that we're going, we're getting ready to see everything, but the kitchen sink thrown at us. So we anticipate it ramping up pretty quickly. So...
I've got a, have you, has your company recently had any contracts canceled or taken away recently to, to downside?
No, we've had no contracts canceled. Matter of fact, we have exceptional CPAR ratings on all that we've done so far.
So no contract with, no contracts with other firms or anybody else that's have been?
Nope. None at all.
And also to the, um, employee, I know you were concerned about that. We, um, we are located, um, to the old Commonwealth Building. We've had a lot of Currituck, um, residents come in, um, and give resumes and everything. Um, we do let them know when they come in that it is a government, um, job. And a lot of it is sometimes travel. And you would be surprised how many of the men that are, you know, ladies that come in that are excited about traveling, that are, would love to go out and travel and see places... and see places. A lot of them are younger men that are single, that are like, huh, you're sending me wherever for six weeks? I'll go, you know.
And it's usually short-term, too. It's not like you're sending them away for the whole year.
Months at a time. They're not living, they're living in a hotel for a couple of weeks or apartment for three months, and they come home. They're not permanently living anywhere else. They don't have a physical address anywhere else but here.
As far as your furniture manufacturing, are you purchasing that some now versus the manufacturing side of it, or how, because I know the discussion was you were gonna be manufacturing all your furniture. Are you outsourcing that now?
We do both. We purchased $100,000 worth of manufacturing equipment that we do intend to relocate to our office there. It's currently located in Portsmouth, Virginia. But again, depending on what the demand is, you know, even today with this contract that we have in place, until the PM decides what location that we're going to, to provide the furniture, we're not exactly sure. You know, in some cases, it's more prudent to have a larger company make it. Like, if we have an order for 500 desks, we're not gonna be able to fulfill that in the timeline. But, but in typical classrooms where we have 30 desks and multiple classrooms, five or six classrooms, that would be something we definitely want to manufacture ourselves. So, it's all subject to, you know, what the task orders are that we receive. Again, this is a contract that's task order-driven, so it's not like most people understand a contract is, that, you know, I'm gonna build 100 desks and that's my contract. No, it's not. The contract is a dollar amount, and the task orders are cut against that dollar amount subject to what the requirements are determined by the different site locations. So, when we go into this contract, we don't necessarily know how many desks we're gonna be making when the contract's awarded to us.
So, carpenters and skilled laborers may not have a full-time job be around there?
It's all subject to, again, what the task orders are, you know, so, but.
So, therefore, if he doesn't meet the requirements, the money doesn't go.
That's right.
I have a question. If the infrastructure that we're given is wastewater, and we don't do that until they perform, aren't they gonna need wastewater before they perform? I'm kinda confused on.
And who's gonna upfront that?
The, the timing of how that works.
The location today, from my understanding, is adequate to accommodate the quantity of people that we have onboard today. It was my understanding, again with Peter, that if, that if the need for improving that system came about, that we would fund it, you know, and at the end of the day, when we met our requirements for performance, that we would get reimbursed for it. I've never, again, ever heard anybody say to me that you guys are gonna throw the money out first, and then we're gonna, you know, you know, benefit from that. I haven't seen that.
I was just trying to figure out if we're doing wastewater, it's not like you're gonna have porta-johns until you've got 16 employees.
Oh, no, no, no.
That's what I was trying to figure out, is how that works.
We have a fully functional system in there that allows us to occupy the building as it is.
So, I won't be giving you any money till May of 2018?
No. I'll do, I'll do a report, it's a disbursement form, a disbursement report. When I put on 40 jobs and I've spent 60 grand, I'm gonna turn you in with a disbursement request and say, you know, advance me this part of that 120 based on what I've performed at, at what level I've performed at, so.
Based on the agreement you have with the state and the county?
Right, that's right, that's right.
So, it's possible that you would have to move your location somewhere else if you start growing?
Well, or, or until the system's put in place, but, you know, again, I don't, I don't anticipate seeing that, 'cause, 'cause the building, we, we won't house 60 people in that building, never, you know, never. At most, it'll probably take 20. The rest of them will be transient, in and out, going to different sites, getting set up to go to the next job, situation like that, you know, and that built, that system that's in place now accommodates that, so.
Okay, who else?
Well, just a couple of questions, because I'm just trying to get my arms around the investment that we're gonna make. I, I think we're all concerned about what the counties, if you get right down to it, what the county's gonna get out of it. So, $120,000, that'll be part of what we're putting up, that goes to the infrastructure, is that correct, the wastewater? Or what does that go to?
Well, I, I think that the, the big thing is the wastewater, but I, I read to you the statutorily qualified items, which includes installation, purchase of equipment, construction of or improvements to facilities.
It's machinery and equipment as well. Does it, yes. So, it's, it would be bricks and mortar, or, as Dan mentioned earlier, all the dollars would go towards some form of taxable equipment in, in the county.
Things that would have to be left behind if you left.
That's the next question. Would they have to be left behind?
Well, not necessarily the machinery and equipment, no.
Doesn't say it in here.
Put bricks and mortar wood.
All right, now, that's, that's, that's one question. I see referenced in here also as well, that there will be making an investment of at least $925,000, that investment.
That's an earlier number, Commissioner Griggs. That included the real estate that, and that was, that original document was before that had been purchased. Because the company purchased the property before we had an agreement together, the 600 or so thousand dollars of that was taken out as previously invested, so it was not new investment based on this agreement. They had already made that investment.
So, that would not be part and parcel to the further provision relative to the clawback for the two-year period?
No, the clawback is based on 325,000, not six, not 925,000.
The clawback would be 325, our investment, again, is 120?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Correct.
All right, and some of that investment would be into the wastewater that would stay with the facility regardless, is that correct? Would that be part of the infrastructure?
It would.
So, that would be something that, whether the business left, what, whatever came in would have to pay or what, for that service, or would have to pay to utilize that service at that. In other words, it would be an enhancement to the property subject to a subsequent sale?
That's correct.
All right.
And that, in fact, will help others, right? I mean, that, that lift station will have effect on other facilities up and down.
That's correct.
So, it's not just for their building, other people would benefit it from, too.
So, the county is investing in their own sewage system, spending their own tax money to pay for their sewage system, in essence?
Correct, in, in expansion of it, yes.
So, it's basically something that we would do possibly anyway, if we were seeking to expand the wastewater system?
Correct.
So, whether there or not, we'd have a lift station we'd have to put in down the road?
To, to accommodate businesses that we were trying to recruit into these, these particular parcels, correct?
All right. Ms. Gilbert?
I just have a comment. We have a company that is trying to relocate and build the economic development in Currituck County, and out of the budget that we govern and the opportunity that bring in other businesses, this could be kinda the leader of the pack, so to speak, as far as bringing other economic development to the county. We have a lot of pushback on housing development and things like that. We have a business that is trying to come to the county, and I think that we need to look at that and, and not make it as challenging as we're trying to make it, and everybody's made some good points, but, you know, we have an opportunity here to bring a business to operate and create some jobs. They will come through the state payroll and things like that, so, you know, take that into consideration also.
If, if I could piggyback on that.
You might.
To follow up on that, there's always unintended consequences. There's intended consequences of all of our actions, and there's also unintended consequences. This is the first such endeavor that I've seen that's come before us at this point in time. It's been in negotiations, it's been in work, and now it is before us. I'm looking at the amount of money that we are, if you will, risking versus what we would get one way or the other if the company were to leave, and then also the tax increase to the base, because one of the words she used was home. The people may work other places, but they come back home. I'm assuming home is this general area, but that notwithstanding, this is our first, we're, this is a tri-party agreement, so the state's got skin in the game as well. If we, we have to be careful what sort of reputation we develop going forward in such endeavors. If the first one out of the box, we start having cold feet or whatever, now I'm just, I just throw that out there as one of the, I try to think beyond, but also I wanted to think about this, too, but think beyond about what sort of message. We try to get businesses to come here. We want businesses to come here. The wastewater, one of the selling, and before I got on the board, was the draw for commercial and the, the attempt to bring commercial to the area for that purpose. We've received criticism for the developments that are taking advantage of that, and now we have an opportunity to, I think, as Commissioner Gilbert said, to take advantage of maybe the first, or first successful attempt to try to move forward in eliciting businesses and business interest in coming to this area. I just throw this out as just some of the thoughts.
Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate your comments, but I would like to let this board know that this is not your, as a board of commissioners, not your first venture into such an arrangement. It might be with the, the One North Carolina Fund, but we, as a county government, have entered and executed a similar agreement that has been successful. In fact, the client we worked with has met the requirements under that agreement, which is very similar to this. So, you actually, as a board, although this board didn't approve it, we have experience and have had a, a previous success with this program.
Okay, and, and just for clarification, I was referring to my limited shelf life and, and based on my anecdotal experiences, and also the experiences that I've, that the two years I've been on this board, we've run into with the wastewater, with trying to get commercial businesses here, and the, the investment, the thoughts that the previous boards have made in attempting to do that, again, as I said earlier, with the wastewater, with the building of that, and I just throw that out there to give us context in our deliberations.
Ms. Gilbert?
I just have a quick question for, for you all. The criteria for payment is a little over 600 a week. That's, that's the, the bottom ceiling as far as a new hire. Being government contractors, there's criteria that you have to meet with your employees as far as clearances and things like that, so there's some, you know, you've gotta raise the bar with, with the people that you hire because of being government contractors. So, that needs to be in consideration for, for people that understand, you know, it's not just a, a job that, you know, anybody off the street can come in if, if they don't meet the security clearances and things like that to be able to work in the facilities. That, that could be a hindrance, so I just want the public to understand that, too, that, you know, I work for a government contractor also, so I know the, the bar that you have to meet for that. So, again, I just commend you for, for coming in and locating to Currituck County.
Anyone else? What is the purpose of this being on the agenda?
Well, I'll submit to you, Mr. Chairman, if, if there's no motion to the contrary, the Board of Commissioners has given its authority and direction on February 17th, 2014, authorizing the execution of the agreement.
All right. Is there a motion to the contrary? Hearing none, move to the next business item. New business consideration and approval of contract with Air Concepts Inc.
Mr. Chair, I talked to the attorney on this, and since this is my company and it would benefit me, I felt it would be the best to recuse myself and step outside while this is going on.
All right, that would require an approval of the board for Mr. Payment to recuse himself?
It'd be appropriate to excuse Commissioner Payment at this time.
Do we need a motion to excuse Mr. Payment?
Suppose we don't want to do that.
Suppose we want to keep him here and make him torture us?
Yeah.
Been good.
Might as well get the full blunt.
I make a motion that he recuse himself.
We have a motion for recusal. A second, any further conversation? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You are recused, but you can't leave.
Now, we can talk.
That's right, just gonna keep walking.
Deputy, keep an eye on him.
Yeah.
Shoot if he needs it.
Just tease him. Wing him.
You want handcuffs?
Lock him up.
Okay, Mr. McCree?
Well, I, I'll just explain this, this is not an unusual event in the life of, of Currituck County, particularly because we're a small rural county, there are times where the county will do business with a member of the Board of Commissioners. This is an exception to GS 14-234, which is known as the Conflict of Interest statute, that allows for a county with no incorporated area having a population of 15,000 or more people to contract with a county commissioner, so long as the sum of the contracts do not exceed $40,000 in a 12-month period. The contract is approved by the Board of Commissioners at a public meeting. The commissioner with whom the county is going to contract does not participate in a vote or consideration of the matter. The county's audit must specifically note the business that is conducted with the county commissioner, and the county must post in a conspicuous place a quarterly report of the amount of monies paid to a county commissioner under contract. The type of contract is one that we have entered into a number of times with Commissioner Payment's company before he became a county commissioner, which is to do some heating and, and air work on county facilities. The amount of this contract is $4,782 to replace a two-and-a-half-ton heat pump at the Health Department building. Staff would recommend approval of the contract.
Will he have to do this every time you contract with him, or is it on an annual basis of to that amount?
You have to do it, you have to do it for each contract. $4,782.
All right, anyone have any questions? Mr. McCree?
Well, Mr. McCree, you said that that threshold in a 12-month period is 40,000, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's, that's where the ceiling is. And Mike, does employ, employees are, some of his employees are in the county, they are county employees, so, I mean, behoove him, even though his business is in Chesapeake.
But he does reside in the county as well.
He's gonna be moving it down now that.
Yeah, now, we're gonna, we're gonna get him moved into Currituck.
It was, it was bid, right? I mean.
It is not, it's underneath the thresholds, and so it's not required to, to be bid, but I would tell you, we use two or three heat and air contractors on an ongoing, continuous basis. Air Concept is one of them, but the fact is, now that he's an elected official, the law, the law requires us to go through in a formal approval by the Board of Commissioners, but he's been doing work for Currituck County for, for years.
All right, need a motion for approval?
I make a motion to approve.
Motion, a second, any further discussion?
Hearing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Get him back in here.
We don't have to vote to allow him back in, do we?
No, you might just note for the record that he is returned to the meeting.
Okay.
And from this point on, his vote will count.
Okay.
I couldn't get a second to let you back in, but we decided to let you in anyway.
That's fine.
All right, next agenda item is board appointment, senior citizen, Mr. Idlet.
I'm gonna reappoint Ms. Maltoon.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is consent agenda.
Motion to accept.
Have a motion to accept. We have a second?
Second.
Second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Commissioners report. Mr. Beaumont?
I have two items that I would like to report on. The first one has to do with the CCRC, the Currituck County Rural Center, and the Suffolk Horse Show Association raided their show at our facility, the number one show of the year last year. They're already scheduling, they have two shows scheduled to come back into the county with a third one looming out there, depending on this week's weather. The date of their next show is going to be, is scheduled to be next Saturday. They already have 67 participants signed up. 25 will be renting stalls, and the, the income generated by the stalls goes directly to the county. by the stalls goes directly to the county, and they have six vendors signed up who also are charged a vendor fee, that, those funds as well go directly to the county. The comments that were given as to justifying its rating included an amazing facility, a wonderful experience, and what a gorgeous place. The second item I'd like to report on has to do with, I had the opportunity and the privilege of participating with Currituck County's engagement or participation at the Science Olympiad held in Greenville, gee, was it only a week ago, it, one week ago, Currituck County High School, JP Knapp, Currituck County Middle School, and Moyoc Middle School were there, there were 12 schools that, that were in competition, Currituck County, I'm sorry, Moyoc Middle School placed fourth in our region in that, Currituck County Middle School placed sixth, this was Currituck Middle's first participation in that, in that event, they had nine children participate, six of them won a first place and are eligible to participate on the state level for the Science Olympiad. So with that said, the obvious question is, how much did the county contribute to our school's emphasis on STEM, and the answer was, we participated nothing. The county provided zero income, zero monies for the, those children to participate, they were funded either directly from the teachers' pockets, or they were forced to hold fundraisers in order to pay for the activity buses necessary to travel to the event, we needed three buses to travel, so we know that STEM, by the way, that stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics, is a national focus, with North Carolina being ranked number two in the country in STEM emphasis, and that's the extent with which our county supported our students, and I would suggest to you as a board that that's kind of discouraging, so I don't know what we can do, but the admission fee was $40 a child, and I knew the principal and the teacher, the science teacher at Currituck Middle School paid for that out of pocket, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hall?
This past month, I had an opportunity to sit in on the board with the College of the Albemarle, and the enthusiasm that I saw in the COA and their commitment to Currituck was encouraging. The citizens of Currituck are benefiting from this, including their aviation, and I look forward to more service with the COA, and that's all I have.
Thank you, it is a great, great asset to the citizens of our county and the Northeast. Mr. Griggs?
I have nothing, thank you.
Mr. Idlet?
I have a thing.
Mr. Payment?
Just one item, and I'd like to bring this up to the, to the manager as well, I have fielded a lot of phone calls lately regarding all the recent snow plowing that has, has been done on the highways, and I guess there's been a lot of concerns with, even the stripes have been scraped off the roads, so they can't even see where the lanes are anymore, so they were just asking if we can maybe mention and expedite to Department of Travestation to maybe
Yes, sir.
Try to speed up on that a little bit.
How about the rumble strip? How about the rumble strips?
Those two, so.
And reflectors.
And, and reflectors too, so that's, that's all I had.
On, on a note on that, I have talked with some DOT workers about an issue where the road is caving in on Water Lily again, and all they can do is patchwork, they, they are, they are running low on maintenance funds, and there was an interesting article in The Advance today
Yes.
That a lot of the district's maintenance funds are used for removing sand when you have a overwash event on the outer banks, and it, it was clearly delineated that snow removal comes from a separate fund, and it doesn't go against that, that district's maintenance money, but if you're on the beach strand, that maintenance money is used to do it, so the maintenance money is supposed to be the fixed roads and everything is used for sand removal, and I believe you all had a discussion about that at RPO meeting, and they're trying to get that changed, and that's one of the issues with the maintenance money, is it's, they have to remove the sand, and the state doesn't give them another fund to move it.
Could, could you, just as a follow-up, is there, do we have any idea over, of, the percentage or the amount of monies that are allotted to our district that go to the individual counties, I mean, is, because that's, that sand is an ongoing project, and it's expensive, and I'm just, I think the bottom line is, I'd like to know what kind of impact it has on Currituck County's ability to see its roads are maintained, and to see if a disproportional, or, or what, where the money's going.
I, I don't know, Mr. Scanlon can probably answer, but I suspect that's division money.
Well, it, it is, and Commissioner Griggs has brought that to my attention, I, I discussed it with the division engineer, and it isn't as readily calculated on, as, as a division as a whole, where their funds go, partially to each county, because the, the lump sum amount they get is, comes from different sources for different purposes, resurfacing money is allocated in different fashions than maintenance versus, and so we could get some general sense of it, but it, it's, when we asked, I requested if he could share with us, you know, by county, how, where all of his funds goes, it's, it's really not accounted for in that fashion, so.
And, and, and that's, that's just, I'm curious, I'm curious about that, because, I mean, the bottom line is, money is money, and if it's allocated to a certain district, there ought to be some way that the people, the citizens, know where that money is going, if there's some sort of esoteric accounting in whatever they're doing, that is making it difficult for us to get an answer, to get an understanding, I suggest that, that may be an issue as well, I mean, it's just, it's, it's all about accountability, where's the money going? And, and do we have citizens in this county that are living on roads that are maybe missing out on the repair necessary because of the tremendous amount of work that's required and funding to move the sand, which seems to be a recurring, if you live there on NC-12 or down there, a nightmare? I don't know, I'm just curious.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, apologize, when you mentioned something about the roads in, in Water Lily, it, something just all of a sudden hit me, I, I'm sitting on a committee, Mr. Woody and myself, has nothing to do with the Board of Commissioners, it was a volunteer thing with the Audubon Society and a bunch of, Ben, it's a, it's a whole bunch of groups of people, to try to look at Currituck's sound. Well, one of the things that we talked about in our last discussion, and from what you just said, one of the things we want to try to do is find some successes about the erosion issues that are going on with the sound, and with what you just said, maybe as, as we struggle with trying to find projects to find some successes, as I ride across the causeway at Nod's Island, as I ride down the road to Water Lily or to Bell's Island, I see a whole lot of places where, Ben, that we can suggest to go to work to do some successes, and it would simply be getting some of the, the governmental bureaucracy out of being able to get permits to stabilize roads, banks, and, and to where you don't have 50-foot of erosion, and you wait until the highway is getting ready to wash away before we are allowed to come in and do anything, so we have, that was meant more for, for, for Mr. Woody and all, but I just wanted you all to know about that as well, but there's, there's plenty of room for some successes there, as I think about it, I struggle with trying to find some, but as I rode, rode along some, I, I seen them and they slapped me, so anyhow, I'll be bringing that up.
Good, and one last comment on the DOT funding, I do know that Malcolm Fearing, our DOT representative, is very aware of that, he's trying to get the state to treat the sand removal just like they do a rockslide or, or, um, snow removal throughout the state, he has recognized it's not fair, and he is pushing to get that, that change for this district, so I just think it's fair that we commend him for doing, trying to get that done as well. Ms. Gilbert?
Thank you, couple things, this Saturday, the 7th of March, is the Business Expo at the Currituck High School, I encourage anyone that would like to show up, there are gonna be tons of businesses, advertising for jobs, it's open from 10 until 3, that's the Saturday at the Currituck High School. On March 28th, just want you to mark your calendar, Currituck Kids is doing their annual Easter egg hunt, will begin at 12:30, so go ahead and put that on your calendar so you can come out and see the Easter Bunny, and that's at Maple Park on March 28th, and then something from the Albemarle Commission, March for Meals, that's the Meals on Wheels program that is recognized nationally, and with the inclement weather that we've had lately, we've had Meals on Wheels programs that have been canceled and, and not fulfilled, so March is the campaign for, it's a, it's an annual month-long event that's sponsored, and it would, also, their, their intentions are to recruit new participants to be volunteers to deliver Meals on Wheels. Here in the county, we have a need, we've got a couple recipients that are needed in the Pals Point area, the, the lower end of the county on the mainland, because we do not have volunteers to support that location, so if you can give your, you know, an hour or two a week to support the Meals on Wheels, you can contact Audrey Holland at 252-426-7093 at extension 230, that was Audrey Holland, 252-426-7093, extension 230, and I'd also like to challenge each one of my commissioners to set up a time at some point in time, and maybe the county manager and the county attorney, and our planning director, and Leanne, you work enough, so I won't challenge you, but I'd like to challenge each one of you all to join me in serving this month at some point in time to partner up with someone with the Meals on Wheels and go out and deliver meals, so if you're interested in that, I'm putting that out there as a challenge, I'd like to spend at least an hour of your time this month in March delivering meals to see what that program's about, so if there's any takers, bring it on, but I'll report it in April, who actually participated in that program, so I'm putting that out there for each one of you.
Thanks.
Okay? Thank you.
Mr. Commissioner, if I could, one other?
Yes, sir.
Uh, March 28th, the Moyoc Fire Department is having their Easter egg hunt and breakfast, please come out and support your local fire departments and other charity events in this time of year, I'd appreciate that, I hope to see you there, I'm planning on eating my fair share of pancakes, so.
Are you gonna be the Easter Bunny?
I don't know, I think Commissioner Payment might do better.
I have two issues, number, the first one, Mr. Scanlon, is, we have been trying to get the Whalehead Channel dredged for, I don't know how many years, been trying to get the dock repaired at Veterans Memorial Park in Coin Jock, and we've been trying to get permits for some of the potholes and drainage issues on the north beach, what I would like at the next agenda is to have a public discussion about that with some pictures to show folks, because I've gotten some phone calls asking me, what's the issue? They don't understand, and is there a channel at Whalehead? Well, I would submit, they wouldn't have built a boat basin if there was never a channel there, and I would like to have some of those photographs that we have that show on a low tide, that channel at the Whalehead Club looks like the Sahara Desert out there, there is no aquatic vegetation, I would like to have that on our next agenda for discussion for informational purposes for our constituents that are reading about this and, and trying to understand what's going on.
But, just to follow up, the sub-aquatic vegetation that the chairman just referred to is ostensibly the reason why the Army Corps of Engineers won't allow that cha, that channel's been there for decades and decades, I mean, there's pictures of it, I mean, there's, people used to come over and, on their boats from mainland Currituck and use that channel, and now the Army Corps of Engineers is just saying, no, there's some sub-aquatic vegetation, and the chairman just said, well, now at low tide, there's, it looks like the Sierra Desert, and maybe we can utilize that for some form, you know, send that to them and say, what is it, mic, uh, microbial?
Oh, they've seen it, but I'd like for the public to be able to see.
A little history, since I have been involved in that on numerous occasions, it is, it was not maintained, this is Corps of Engineer language, not Vance's, by no means, it was not maintained, and the same thing with the potholes and the drainage and everything else in the north beach area, it was not maintained for a certain number of years, or therefore it reverts back to its natural state, naturalized state, so therefore, it begins from the beginning again. Mr. Scanlon, is that not
That's correct.
Correct assumption? So, they don't care if there was a channel there, they don't care if it was dredged half a dozen times, it hadn't been maintained over a certain number of years, so in their eyes, there hasn't been no channel, and not gonna be one, and that's, that's what they're saying.
Well, they, they forgot to take down the channel marker, didn't they?
I, I agree, I understand, I rode it, been in there dozens of times.
Can we do that?
So the answer is then, because we didn't complain, that they didn't do their job,
it doesn't exist?
I, I don't know who did, who's job.
We've gotten documents from the United States Navy showing that channel, we've got pictures of people in boats going in and out of that channel, I've been in that channel as a little kid on the mailboat, they used to leave from Casey Jones Store to carry mail over to Corolla, and, and it's just, it's just incomprehensible what Vance is saying.
But who, who, who maintained it, I mean, you, you, there's people in this county that will tell you that their parents dredged the channel there on numerous occasions, it's all to Jerry Wright, he'll tell you. So now, whose, whose responsibility it was to maintain it, Lord only knows, I don't know, and I don't think nobody else does.
Didn't one time somebody accidentally kind of
State did it.
Limped the channel, and then they came back and said, this person with their prop wash was against the law?
And they've sent that guy to prison, and then they brought sand in and filled up what was left of the channel.
Different kind of sand that was not even natural that was there.
Wasn't even the natural sand that you would find there.
I look forward to this next
Yes. Next item, I would like to discuss, Mr. Woody, I think there is a general feeling among, maybe amongst the commissioners and the public, we have so many zoning districts in our UDO, used to, before we rewrote the UDO, there was just a handful of zoning districts, now there are a tremendous amount of zoning districts, is there some way we can combine some of those districts, eliminate some of those districts, because what happens is, the engineer will look at the land, and he'll say, okay, I can do this zoning districts to maximize the number of lots on it, okay? It's allowed, then it comes before us and the general public is out here, how come they're getting extra benefit? How come they're getting extra lots? How come they're getting more density or whatever? I know that we in the retreat directed to start looking at this, but I think we need to look at the number of zoning districts we have, and see if there's a way to reduce some of those numbers, and, or maybe combine some of them, but make it simpler, and then if you want an overlay to allow for a density for some kind of special reason, then, okay, but I am asking this, as, just as a commissioner, and I don't know if anybody else agrees with me or not.
I would support that, I would support that, it's just, it just, it seems to be overly, well, I'm a simple person anyway, but it just seems to be overly complex, and like Occam's razor says, usually the simplest answer is the best, oftentimes are the simplest solutions, so maybe, maybe we can make it easier for all of us to understand if we don't have such a complex.
If we need to come in for a half a day on a Saturday or something, I think we'd be
I'm good with that.
willing to do that, to have a conversation, and maybe figure out how best to address it, but I, I do think that amongst the general public, there's confusion, amongst the commissioners, there may be confusion, but amongst the engineers, there is no confusion, they know exactly what to do to get the most out of whatever piece of land, and I don't blame them, I mean, that's what it's about, if that's what they want to do, but I just think it's created a lot of angst amongst our constituents and amongst us with the way it's playing out.
If we can solve that, I'll come in a full day Saturday and a half a day Sunday.
Yeah.
The other thing is that sometimes we ask staff and others to do it, and this may not be the place, but maybe we need to say after, within 30 days, have a response, or ask an extension by staff for what we asked for, because sometimes we don't always follow up as quickly as we should, maybe that's, we need anything we ask for you within 30 days, if not, you, you will ask for an extension.
Yeah, but, but also, we got to take some of it too, sometimes we send conflicting messages too, we need to make sure that's what we want to do, and, and get the wisdom and the knowledge of Mr. Woody to help us to find a way to do it, so. of Mr. Woody to help us to find a way to do it, so.
A half-day Saturday sounds great.
But not this Saturday.
I'll work on that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. If you get back with us with some ideas and times, I think everybody would be willing to spend a half a day or whatever it takes to do it.
If the Board of Commissioners, I think it would take at least a half a day, if not a full day, to go through that. If the Board of Commissioners are prepared to give a side, staff is prepared to have that conversation with you right now. What we would need for the board would be, just tell us what Saturday, what weekend you're prepared to do, but staff can have that conversation with right now.
And it doesn't have to be a Saturday. I just said Saturday, so.
We would just need to know when the board's available for all of y'all scheduled to meet, and if you would let us know when this board's prepared to have that conversation. Staff is prepared.
Available off five days a week and twice on Saturdays and Sundays.
[laughing]. You sound anxious. Mr. Scanlon, do you have anything to report?
I just want to remind the board that next Monday night at six o'clock, you have a joint meeting with the Board of Education. And for, I believe, at least five of you, the essentials of county government class was rescheduled to next week, so we'll be leaving. I'll get an email out to you. We'll leave sometime on Tuesday. You'll be in class all day Wednesday and Thursday in New Bern, attending a school of government class, but that was rescheduled next week.
Mr. Scanlon, I know you had sent out an email asking for input for subject matter for this meeting coming up with the school board?
Correct.
Okay. I'll send you something tomorrow. Mr. Beaumont brought up a good point a while ago when he was talking about the buses, and I understand there's other activities that go on to where kids have to raise funds, and I'd just like to know what the policy is on their activity bus stuff, so.
And the meeting will be held here?
Cooperative extension.
Cooperative extension, okay. All right. Anything else? Hearing none. We need a motion from Ms. Gilbert.
Mr. Chairman, I move to enter a closed session, present General Statute one-four-three-dash-three-one-eight-point-one-one-eight-three in order to consult with the county attorney and to preserve the attorney-client privilege.
I'll second that.
Motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.